...then, and if you haven't had a chance, please take a minute, breathe a minutes. Then I would entertain any motion.
I'll make a motion accepting minutes.
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Good? Thank you. Good? Thank you. Uh, whole business. Which pond is that? What's the deal here?
Let's just have them that they're gonna bring us into New Mylar with the planting changes in the bond, changing the bond to from ten thousand to fifteen, we didn't get the plans. Uh, we discussed the difference was the twenty foot on center spacing. Uh, they're good with, uh, they wanna do seeding, can seed the whole area and say it'd be a minimum of twenty by twenty, but seed the whole thing. But they were supposed to bring us in a plan by Thursday, which doesn't mean Thursday, so we'll probably, we'll get it next week, put it on the next agenda.
Do you have concerns about that at all?
I don't think so. Again, it was an old, it was an old moonscape area, which has been cleaned out, the more concerns would be the new area of development that they're doing, so.
Well, they haven't even started anything out there yet, right?
No.
Okay, new business. Looks like we're back in Millville Road. Hotel property. Come on up?
Yeah. You can grab another seat if I want, if you guys both wanna come up, or she can stay back there and tell me what you're doing. That's what I thought. So we've been working a few months on this project here, they're still missing a little bit of information, but they're gonna come tonight to review the basic outline of what they're doing, so you guys will have some homework to study and review. I think we're waiting on wetlands delineation and the DOT entrance permit for the facility. Uh, the wetlands delineation would be as the road currently goes in here now. Uh, and their activity is going to be in this area, there's currently a logging road that's been there forever, um, that does go through some wetland area where it's not mapped as resource protection or fossil wells or anything on us, but it is actually, so they're working on delineation out there. The DEP would allow them to bring in as much fill in the existing road as possible, it's just when they wanna widen the road, they're gonna do the calculations on the areas that are wider.
How long is this potential road that's coming in to get to the area that needs to be, uh?
Twelve, fifteen hundred feet. So, and it's not all, there's just a couple of areas, and I don't think you probably have anything for the first seven, eight hundred feet.
Yeah, I, um, I actually got the preliminary, started the delineation today, um, and it looks like there's actually just a small section where the wetlands crosses the road that's there today, and I'm looking at the map quickly, it looks like maybe fifty feet, so.
So not like we thought.
Right, right, when you use the wetland map that's here, that you use the overlay, it looks like a lot more, um, but from the, the survey that was done, that you guys probably looked at for the subdivision, and then working with Rick Jones, who's a wetland delineator, is, he's done some initial looking, so, you know, we wanna understand, are we tier one, are we not tier one, are we tier two, because if we're tier two wetland permit, we're likely not gonna be able to make this kind of thing work. Um, so that's where we're at right now, I need to confirm with him exactly where we are, and then we belong in the process as, you know, we work with you as well.
Great. Ken, can you help us, you know, may locate this in regards to the, uh, rest of the parcels that comprise the area?
Yeah, so we just did the subdivision, they are going to do the back lot, here the eighty-five acres.
Yep. Just one, this section here.
And that is the lot, I think, had a little resource protection and shoreline zoning on the backside.
Yep.
Right in this area here, which they're not going to be. Just about five hundred feet to the area that's disturbed already. So tonight's just a preliminary pre-app meeting, get you guys the information, answer some questions. See if the board wanted to do a site block out there.
So, so what's in your back of your mind, what's the plan?
So our thought is to basically create a barn that is rustic in nature, but nice that you can hold events in, and so our hope is to have our private residence there and host events. Our focus is weddings, but not to say that there wouldn't be other events that people were interested in, I think I saw it being quite on the sign on the way in, you know, those kinds of ideas would be really great, too.
Benefits, work functions.
Yeah, so really the design is to give people maybe a destination area to come and, you know, check out how nice it is and create a nice field area. Um, I have hopes of making small orchards and things, you know, personally, that would lead to good things for this business as well, but, but that's really kind of the generic idea so far.
So, so I guess in my head, I have, I guess, a wedding venue, I guess from a previous lifetime ago, when, when I, and, and what you're saying seems pretty much a single building.
Yep.
Open inside?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so it's an area of about fifty by seventy, that would be wide open, posted beam type structure, um, and two side areas of the barn, that would be about fourteen feet in width, along the sides, that would be areas for a groom suite, a bridal suite, um, a bar area, restrooms, things like that, some storage, but, but generally, yeah, nice open space for.
We are potentially also looking at, um, creating a second smaller structure to be more of like a chapel, if, um, we'd like to do events all winter, so if we have a larger wedding, maybe more space for that inside, we can't necessarily stand it up properly, so we're looking at doing that, whether or not we do that immediately, or a little down the line.
What kind of numbers are you looking at as far as, how big are your events?
Um, so we're looking at up to a fire code, I think our maps will be two thirty-three, um, I think in here we said two forty-nine.
Yeah, so we wanna work and figure out, hey, you know, with our idea of the structure, what, what is it supposed to be? Our, our goal would be around the two hundred and thirty mark, working with Ken recently, we're thinking, you know, hey, two forty-nine is right under the limit for needing a mass gathering permit, we don't have any anticipation of getting that large, and I think that the average wedding we'd expect is really like a hundred and seventy-five or so, but, you know, getting to the top of it right around two forty-nine, and that's obviously, um, dependent on fire codes and reviews to say that, yeah, your structure can handle it, your septic can handle it, and all of, you know, everything is related, so, so this is preliminary, we've got our ideas, but we need to make sure that what we do down the road after kind of receiving approval for the general use, we make sure it lines up with that.
Do you suppose any of your proposed buildings will be visible from the wall?
I don't expect so, no.
And then the home itself, detached?
Detached.
Correct. And there, there is no plans for the home in the, in this documentation just yet, but we were hoping to keep it closer to the road, uh, but we wanna figure out the wetland situation before we say, hey, we're gonna put our house here, and then, you know, it's wetland, we don't wanna obviously do that, so.
Do you ever see this morphing into a, a restaurant?
That hasn't been in any of our initial plans, not for kind of regular business, more of one-off events, um, we do have some potential thoughts of, you know, we plan to live here, that's, that is the plan, um, within the future, it made sense for it to become kind of a bed and breakfast, we could come back and talk about that again, and, and, you know, go from there, but that's a potential future opportunity.
But currently, we're planning on having cater, like exterior caterers come in for the events.
Right, yeah, we don't feel, we're not gonna be doing any of the cooking on-site.
Well, we have a kitchen prep area, which won't have any, like ovens or stoves or anything like that, the caterers will bring in whatever they need, but that way they can prepare, you know, the salads and be inside and not outdoors.
It's an ambitious plan.
Thanks.
I mean, it's nice to see, it's nice to see.
Yeah, our hope, you know, our, our kind of thought is just, this is a great kind of business, we, I feel like, and I listed a couple of items that I think it could bring opportunity to local business, florists, decorators, photographers, wedding planners, you know, DJs, bands, things like that, I, our hope is that, you know, it's a low-impact use to the, to the town, you know, we don't want to disturb anybody by any means, so what's really nice about this piece of land is that there's enough land that we can get out kind of away, so any of the noise that might be made, we'll be far enough away, and we've actually done some noise testing preliminary and say, this is how loud a typical wedding would be, and this is out in the open, this isn't even in a structure yet, and we're far off the property line, well within the festival levels that are, that are in the ordinance, so, so we're, wanna bring a business that, you know, is beneficial to us, beneficial to the community, and really doesn't impact anybody negatively, that is, that is the goal.
It'd be hard pressed to beat the decimal level of all the fights leaving behind today. You need a very good band.
But they're gone by eight o'clock.
Yeah.
At home. You're getting that, that age group's hitting older.
Probably staying in those, uh, yeah.
And so why still gotta beat?
Any other questions out there from anybody? There's a lot to look at, and certainly we need some time to get through this.
Right, I mean, we can go through anything you all want, or we can let you all read through here, okay?
Um, my concern would be, just, because I've been in hospitality business, would be the drinking and driving, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot of hotels nearby.
Yeah.
And what would be the plan for people who are over served?
Well, I mean, so we would like to get our liquor license, but we're unsure if that will be able to happen right away, but we would only hire professional bartending services, they've been trained to know when someone has been over served, you stop serving alcohol forty-five minutes to an hour before the event is over, that way no one is being served a drink, and then they're leaving. Um, there are certain, you know, in the wedding venue industry now, a lot of people are actually hiring shuttle services if they do think, you know, not necessarily that someone would be drunk leaving the property, but if people are drinking, and that's a concern of the people having the wedding, they can hire, you know, a bus to shuttle people back and forth from the hotel or a house that they choose to rent or anything like that.
And so in kind of some of our research, we've seen, you know, there's a lot of rental property in the area, especially kind of lakefront that would be desirable, I think, for a lot of the people coming to these events, and then we're not too far from the Sanford area, so it's, you know, we, we wanna be rural, because it's that kind of thing for the business, but we don't wanna be too far away from a lot of these, you know, hospitality areas that it's, it doesn't make sense for people, so we're hopeful that this is a happy medium.
Who, who'd you nearest compare?
There are a few around, um.
We were just looking at.
Flaming Farm is fairly close, I think they're forty minutes, a half an hour.
They're in the Waterboro, Lyman area, I forget the exact town, there is one in, we were just looking at this one.
That Dana Brooke married at.
Yeah.
Tumbledown.
Tumbledown, yeah.
They're about twenty-five minutes away or so, so they're probably the closest, I think. And then you have a lot, um, a little bit northern, you know, northern Hampshire, northern Maine areas, too, so.
Would you see yourself using it as a concert venue?
No.
More just weddings and?
Yeah.
Yeah, concerts haven't been part of our, our initial thoughts, and I think that, you know, through discussions with you guys, we wanna keep it as open as we can, but we don't wanna open to something that would be, you know, negative, so.
Not even a Judy Hadby's retrospective.
I'm open to it, I mean, you know, we definitely foresee bands, because people always have bands at, at their weddings, but.
Just holding the concert, hasn't really been something we've even discussed.
Uh, all the trash taken off the site from a dumpster?
So, the plan is that we'll have dumpster on-site, we are hopeful and wanna work with vendors that will take their trash off site, so we're gonna have the capability to make sure it's stored.
Carry, carry out?
Yeah.
I tried to discourage him on the first few meetings we had, just to lay it out, and they kept coming back, so.
We got a good discussion.
I didn't wanna crush their dreams, but it's a huge venture.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, at this, I mean, we talked sprinkler systems, bio-martial permits, uh, he's done a real great job laying out the parking and some of the facilities.
He's been through this.
He's been doing, uh, sound meter testing with, I think he used a grass trimmer or chainsaw or something.
Yeah.
At the sites, uh, they, they've seemed really progressive to not wanna bother the neighbors, but yet have a great asset to the community.
So what do we have out here at the back? Dustin Curtis property to?
Yeah, uh, resource protection.
That's all resource protection on it? And I was talking about this area here that would eventually be.
So definitely can this area here generally, so this is your resource protection buffer up through here, there's about five hundred feet, four to five hundred, so. So nobody's gonna do anything to this backside.
So that's even adding to the open space that's going there.
There are a couple of people here, and, uh, the lake here, and Irondale's out here. So one of my first thoughts was, does the planning board even think they wanna go off for a site block out there? That's basically.
That lot road is accessible, right? It's into the.
I, yeah, so we can, yeah, you either, you either want a truck, or we can park at the road and walk everyone in, um, I would not suggest taking a car out there right now, it's not quite ready.
You know, we've gotta get a look at which wet area we were discussing earlier, which doesn't show up on the map.
It's not necessarily a wet area that we are able to see, it's forested and shrubbery wetlands, so it's something more that a professional goes out and, like, this plant is.
Yeah, if we walked out there, we'd be able to tell.
Yeah, you'll see some damp areas in the.
Gapping, yeah.
Gapping, yeah.
Yeah, so I wouldn't, but, um, if you know what you're doing, yeah, but a lot of it, you know, it's, uh, looks dry and there's something on.
Seasonally dry, exactly.
Right, yeah.
Do you know when you're gonna have the wetlands delineation report or map back?
So I have, I actually, I emailed you it, and I do have, I'm gonna flash drive it real quick. It just came in today, so.
You guys think you'd have people staying overnight or camping?
Not on our property.
Yeah, so you'd have like a, we put in the condition that we'll leave by a certain time, or?
Yeah, yeah.
What time are you thinking?
Um, I mean, we'd like to be midnight, one o'clock, but that depends upon what we all kind of agree on.
Yeah, I think, I agree, we, you know, we'd like to be at the, the midnight, one o'clock range, we've seen a lot of area be earlier than that, and kinda just wanna work through, what does that mean, and, you know, what are we saving through that kind of process, so.
It's earlier, there's more people on the road in search of notice, I don't know. You know, if they leave at eleven, there's gonna be more people on the road coming home on a Friday night than if they left at one in the mornings, I don't know what the difference is.
So this is showing where the wetlands are.
Has he flagged this at all yet?
I haven't been onto the property since, and I didn't get a chance to talk to him, but there, there's a chance that it could be flagged, yeah.
So I don't think we'd be worried about all this area around here, but just where the road's going through, so.
Right.
So at least it's gonna give you hope for the tier one permit.
Well, yeah, it was actually.
We may not even be yet.
Oh, you'd be exempt on the forty-three hundred square feet.
Right.
That, that would be the idea.
Yeah, we would do that.
Well, because originally, the original map showed a huge grouping of it, so then we're definitely looking at a tier one application.
Yeah, initial thoughts, it looked like a seven hundred feet of the driveway might have been considered, you know, forested shrub wetlands.
And with us expanding it to twenty-four feet, it's, was substantial.
Twenty-four feet, yeah.
And, yeah, so we, you know, whatever width of a driveway makes sense, you know, we know there needs to be two-way traffic, fire trucks need to be able to get in and out, emergency vehicles and whatnot, um, but we obviously wanna disturb as little as possible to, so.
I'm pretty sure the town was for twenty.
Is that okay?
I think I just saw that, too.
Twenty.
When, when you go back to that overlay of the, the map, um, the, the next one back, the bigger one, no? The one that had the original picture, the original one that was there, where you were showing the wetland, the beginning of it, the end of it, um, you know, it came in off the flash drive.
Oh, the emailed?
Yeah.
Wetland delineation.
Okay, that one, where again, from here in perspective to what I have here, are we?
So do you see the little clearing where it's brown? Um, so there are the swiddles.
Those.
Where it shows the road going through.
Right around the road.
Right around the road going through, you can see that, um, kind of brown area.
Towards the bottom.
Towards the bottom.
Um, where it says limited preliminary wetland.
This thing right here.
Yeah, right there.
That's the old log landing.
So that's the old log landing, so we're slightly above that, we're kind of up in that area.
Yeah, from the high, dry area.
Yeah.
And we're also open to, you know, as, as we get closer to actually doing it if possible, we'll make sure that, you know, if we have to try and move what we have drawn, nothing is set in stone, you know, this is, we've gone on walk property, come up with some basic ideas, and we'll adjust as needed.
Tom, do you recall a number of years ago, we had a site visit up here for that?
Subdivision.
Subdivision, there was a lot of talk about a deer yard back in there. Do you remember that, Tom?
I think, uh, Roger, yeah. Not Roger, uh.
Right?
But I, I have never seen it corroborated on any.
So what do we refer to?
A deer, a deer yard.
There's some maps, uh, I have, W have, they kinda hold close, and they'll tell everyone where the deer yards are, and they'll, um, gather in the winter, in, in the lock area, but, I would think would be limited of development on, was it eighty-five acres?
Yeah, so we're thinking somewhere in the realm of six acres being touched, with most of it being a field, honestly, so, you know, less than ten percent of the property.
Contour wise, this is all fairly flat, and twenty-foot contours in between, so it's all fairly, this is a good area right there of, uh, and when we did the subdivision, we noticed that it got steep right through this area here.
Yeah, which appears onto the other property.
Yeah, that other asshole up there.
So what do you think, everybody, about taking a walk out that way, or what do you wanna do?
Yeah, if it was any poor conditions, maybe after the.
Yeah, they have, they have.
Flag.
That's probably true, too. We don't know that these are flagged yet.
Right.
Can we tentatively set something?
That's what I was hoping.
You know, otherwise it's gonna end up being further down the road. You're thinking, what are we thinking? Early, earlier on Thursday is not gonna work for some people.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do it off Thursday?
Oh, and off Thursday.
How's that work for you?
Um, today I don't get it.
I see, we were thinking you were early today.
We hadn't started.
Somebody said six past.
So, so, is, can you do it for some, can you guys do a seven o'clock?
Yeah.
If you were to do, can you link?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think it'd be, um, I have it delineated for next Thursday, or do you wanna push it the following week would be a meeting night, so you'd push it the week after, three weeks from tonight, I guess.
It's either one week or three weeks.
Would there be a way for us to contact?
Yeah, just.
The wedding person tomorrow and let you know.
Yeah, 'cause if we can do it next week, I think that'd be great for everybody, but I don't wanna waste your time either, so.
Yeah, well, we could do it, we can get info with everybody, or you, you'll get info, Gavin, you can check in and see if it's on or off.
I can call get in.
We can let them know if it's off.
So tentatively on the twenty-seventh, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Now, first I.
Thursday, I believe, yeah, so today's the twenty-eighth.
At seven, are you meeting here or going to Ripley Out there?
I'm gonna leave from here anyway, so we can meet here at seven and.
Yeah, maybe, so I'm not even exactly sure where that entryway is over there, I drew by it the other day, but I still wasn't sure exactly where it was.
It's got a fence on the state, it's got a gate area.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, you guys, uh. Do you wanna just have them delineate the wetlands near this road area that they're doing in this outskirts, or do you want to delineate all of it, even if they're not gonna be near?
Wasn't tuned in, sorry. I was running my calendar, I was wanting to have a site visit next Thursday.
Do you want to just delineate this wetlands if they'll be disturbing, or do you want to delineate all of this in this area that they're not gonna be anyways near?
I'm comfortable with the area that we're dealing with.
Yep.
And that whole thing, that's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, road crossing area, that'll make it easier for the person doing the delineation, then during construction, we'll be requesting it anyways.
This, this will need quite a, uh, septic system to handle restaurant facility.
Yeah. What's happening with the septic is they'll design it assuming that two hundred and forty-nine people are using it every day, whereas in this case, it's once a week, so, uh, there's a flow meter you can install for the amount of water you use, and if you use the paper plates as a reduction and stuff like that, so, um, July twenty-seventh?
Everybody's good with that, right? Seven o'clock, good, and we'll say here, how about six fifty, six forty-five, six fifty?
I don't know, I just think you're there.
Do you know where it is?
She was on the original site block. The subdivision site block.
Before, I guess you were there two times. Any other questions from anybody? So we have a little homework to do between now and, uh, two weeks from tonight, maybe more. To go through, go through the book at least to have a sense of exactly what these guys wanna do. From there, and do you have any other questions, Ken?
No, like I said, we've been working on this for a few months, he's got it pretty well shaken out, he's ready to answer almost any of the questions.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you have questions that come up as you're reviewing, you know, feel free to, I guess we can use Ken as kind of our intermediary, and like, we can do our best to come with an answer for you then, you know, so we're on top of it.
Great, thanks, appreciate it. Okay.
All right, well, thank you all for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
You're hired.
I just did my.
Oh, nice.
I'm not, I'm not one for jokes.
Thank you all.
What is this, their map?
But she has.
Rick, this is your map?
Yeah.
No, no worries, thank you.
Okay, next. Another conditionally.
Much smaller.
Much smaller.
The energy and enthusiasm of you is impressive. I remember the days, they are long gone.
So I'm glad I didn't remember the days.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Fine.
I'm Nancy, I've been here in two thousand and eleven, that was before the planning board, because I wanted to build a very small camp, Camp Bellasole, right on the intro, and it's a camp for nonprofits, and it's been going great, it's very small, lots of, kids have had lots of great experiences, and other folks have used it to other nonprofits, and it does my heart good to see people there. But since that time, I'll move on to something else, since that time, the property adjacent to the camp came up for sale, and I tried to ignore it. One more. So, today, I'm talking about the property on eighteen thirteen intro, so the camp is on twenty-eight Fulton Road.
And this is great east or eastbound?
Correct, great east, yeah, second basin. So the camp, original camp is on twenty-eight Fulton Road, my house is seventeen twenty-five H Road. And the new property, oh my gosh, that's the camp.
So originally, Big Brothers, Big Sisters was the primary use of the camp up there, and since then, she's purchased the lot next door. And has originally built a storage shed in this general area here, now she would like to do.
Now I would like to offer some opportunity to local starting artists and hold artist workshops.
Did you say starting?
Starving, yeah. I mean, it's amazing, I came from, I came from the corporate world and now I'm in the art world, and artists are really starving, I mean, it's tough, and I love the enthusiasm that artists have about making it work in creative organization and work, and I thought, well, what a great way to kind of offset the operating cost of the camp, because I don't charge nonprofits to go there, and then one thing led to another, before you know what, I was in Ken's office, and I said, Ken, my storage shed, I'd like to use as a workshop, so.
It looks fairly similar to this.
Yes, I have pictures. I have pictures that, first of all, show you, the bottom picture shows the view from H Road, you can see, you can only see the driveway, and then. And then, so the view from H Road, you can't really see anything over the driveway leading up to the property, the picture on the top there, when you're at the top of the driveway and you look to the left, that's the storage building, and if you flip it over, you will see that the bottom picture is the building.
This is the storage building.
Yep, right there. And then if you look at the top picture, you can see on the workshop, and through the woods on the left is where the camp is, that's the original Camp Bellasole campus.
And was that the original picture that Ken had up front?
Yes. This is looking at it from the other side. So it's tucked away nicely, I think, and it's just a wonderful peaceful place that would be ideal for people to explore their creative sites, you know, and also it brings good, be good for the community, local businesses, you know, artists are not really a bunch of ragged people.
How big is that building?
It's thirty by forty, thirty by forty.
And the same kind of thing that we were talking about previously, is like a posting beam inside, is all just open?
Yeah, it's just open, it's not lint posting, it'd have to be really nice, but it's not that nice, it's just open, lots of places for parking, handicap parking next to the workshop, and it's flat, so no problem getting in, there are no stairs, parking, you can't even see the parking from the road, and really, it's that whole parcel, we don't have a lot of neighbors.
Is it, it's still two separate parcels?
It is still two separate parcels, yep.
Did you just say that, that eventually it would merge together?
No.
Will not.
No, I don't think so, I don't, I don't think so.
And what about those camps along water, that are adjacent to that?
Yes.
Yes, it would be a separate driveway serving eighteen thirteen.
Yes.
So you're just gonna drag one?
Yes, the first picture, that's, that's the driveway, yeah. And also, I called in the acting wake-up watershed lines, because when I came here before, they were concerned about possible erosion walking down to the beach, so I have them back, and they checked everything out and said it's looking pretty good, they did put in a water bar poster to the swimming area, and they also put in some steps, so basically, no problems with any of that.
Any other questions, comments?
Anybody see me?
So what, no heat?
That would be. Do you want to limit it to seasonal now, or?
No, I would, I think I would like to move it open if I could, just because I never know what's happening, what's coming next, it will be seasonal this, this year for sure, but you know, it's nice to have options.
Yeah.
Options are good. What questions can I answer for you?
It seems like there's a big difference, distance between the camp and the storage, but it's only a couple hundred feet.
Yeah.
And when she purchased this parcel here, it came with a house on it.
Yep.
You gonna rent that out, or?
I would probably have that available if they were overnight workshops for students to stay there. Yeah.
Overflow from a wedding facility?
Oh, gosh, I know. I don't know, those are pretty rocky, I don't, I have that. Yeah, exactly, right? That's really not there, but there's a little bit more handling.
Yes, just, so I can understand the proposed buildings that are gonna be on eighteen thirteen, this is non-existent.
That is interesting, that's the storage, and I've changed it to workshop, and that's what we're looking at there, these are just parking spaces.
So you're gonna transform the parking garage type workshop into a more of a studio space? So there's essentially, in your proposal here, there are no more.
This storage shed was new, quite existing, existing in all the past. Any, any questions?
It's all daytime workshop?
Yes.
You might do a weekend workshop?
Weekend, yes, as possible, I'm thinking like the workshop itself wouldn't be any earlier than eight and no later than eight.
Maybe, this, this is restricted to painting?
Oh, no.
So would it be power tools?
What do you like?
Would it be power tool woodworking?
There could be, it's not in my plan.
So what about electrical supply, you need maybe a two-twenty amp service on some of the tools, you do have it there?
I always put, I, when I did the camp, and then, you know, I'm starting to really learn about all this construction stuff, although I never want to do it again.
But you keep coming back.
No, this is the last time.
This is it, she promised.
This is the last time.
There's another parcel that's open, you know.
No.
So she constructed the storage building last year, the year before, been a couple of years, she's been working on it, and the thoughts were, years down the road, she'd do something, but she's been approached by stabbing at us for a place to do.
I'm part of the State Department Association.
Well, that's right, your connections.
Through the place.
Yeah, right. They have the connection. Do we think, do we need to take a look? Are we good?
Come to it, come to it, it's part of the workshop.
We're supposed to look at it, right? I think it says may versus shall, but I don't know if you guys want to group it up the same night.
Could it get dark? I'm not June.
It is getting back on.
Let's see, we have fifteen hundred feet to walk.
No, I think we should stay booked for this a week from today, because if it's possible to, the wetland delineator may not finish with that work from, from now.
Yeah.
To go on that, we'll do this one instead.
Double block?
I don't know, we could take it, that would be my tendency.
Watch out for uncle.
I don't feel very confident that it would be ready, but.
Well, you don't, you don't.
I don't, one week?
I mean, it, but it's, could be done.
He just flagged it, but it's not.
He's found it, so I would imagine you have to flag it as you find it, so you know we've banned it. Whatever, whatever you guys want to do. I don't know.
I mean, I don't, I don't mind, you know, piggybacking them, but I don't want to trouble them.
The driving thing takes it.
What's that?
The first one might take some, a little bit of hiking.
I mean, if we did this one earlier, six thirty is just, and then I can bring Yoli up at a different time, or she can stop by at her leisure.
I mean, can you guys do a six thirty? You guys do?
If we make it to the hill by seven. This one's simple.
Yeah.
Get out and kind of look around and say, oh my god.
I mean, the driveway's gonna access the area we're talking about right here, we're gonna be able to drive right to it, correct?
Does the driveway have to be expanded for the parking lot being designed?
No, when they constructed the, the storage shed, they really paid a lot of money for a bit. Down on the side of it, you know? It's very flat, once you, once you go up the driveway, it's very flat, you have an open.
All right, anything else, then?
There's always a chance they get it early.
Yeah, yeah, all right, thank you.
All righty, thank you very much.
We'll see you this week.
Catch back?
So, so we'll either gonna be.
Leave right out here at? Six fifteen.
Yeah, say six fifteen, and we have a couple minutes to play with it, it'll be there by six thirty, and, okay, thanks Ken.
Thanks very much.
I just had another one.
Next. We have your best practical location. Next side road, from? If we get in there, if we don't get in there, we might not be here.
Exactly. Good. So eight twenty, Lake Side Drive, looking at demoing this place, we'll go back a little. A lot of these older camps, when they dug into the hill behind, there's not much behind it to relocate it. Existing camps, three feet from the property line, forty-eight feet from the water, the new camp would be fifty-four feet and then centered in the lot.
And just the typical thirty percent increase?
Acting wake-up watershed, working with them, with stormwater mitigation.
Septic, that's the deal there.
New septic. On this back area up in here. Yeah, lakes on this side, so it gets it back a little bit, originally, I thought there was a little bit more to get, but as the contours show, there's not much more there, and it gets tight here pretty quick. Because we tried to get it back to fifty there, if we can. If we can, yeah. What's this thing right here, damn, this bullock right here? Entranceway, deck tight, clerical sign, in and out.
There's an overhang, so that you're out of the rain when you're trying to get in the doors, is that what you mean?
In the parking, on the septic.
I think it's a.
Oh, it's just the driveway up there.
I think so.
Yeah, and generally, yeah, not a lot of room on the site as it is right now.
Yeah, it's a jumping.
Right on the lake side, we'll do also, surface. Oh, you can see, you can see where it's dug right into the bank there.
And so how big is this house, approximately?
Twenty by fourteen is the house, with a twenty by ten and a twenty by eight four, so it's not very.
So all of that would then just be encompassed into a new structure plus the thirty percent?
Correct.
We're still, are we only talking a thousand square feet in the end of this, this project?
Yeah.
Something that range, a lot of two. And height wise, it's not, it wouldn't go up?
Eight hundred and thirty-two.
With the new ton, the new ton?
But you do get the free basement.
Yeah. Any other concerns, any that you want to?
No, there really wasn't much room, it's great that they're getting it off the sideline, putting it into the center of the lot, because currently, I think it's about three feet off the property line.
We were, we were up there, right? Looking at something close by?
Running down lake side. Yeah, it's been a few years since I think we've actually done the site walk on lake side. Who's that?
Last time we were out there was with David Joy and his assistant overdrive.
Oh, on. Yeah. Does that still drive, yeah?
Any comments, questions, are we good with this? Motion?
I think a motion, we approve, confirm, recommendation?
Say.
Any, any other comments on the motion itself? All bated? Okay, good, all right, great. Another EPL on H Road.
This one here, building it, removing the whole structure. This one here, building it, removing the whole structure, getting rid of all these retaining walls in this area here, not just stone ones. They've already removed this here, the insurance company has required him to get rid of this. This is the house here, the backside of the house, so. This is the existing house, we're just looking at the backside from right there, it's fifty feet from the water. The new one shows eighty, it's gonna be a little tighter on this side here than that eighty. I'll forget that number. C and P line's running right on the backside of it right there. So they've brought it right up to the right away as far as they could.
So what are those numbers that you're saying it's gonna get moved back by?
It's fifty right now, he has it as eighty, and I just gotta double check the plan to see if that's to the corner of that house.
It looks like it's to the green around that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Eight feet. So seventy-two.
So it goes from fifty to seventy-two, so still twenty-two feet. Is there a reason why the, the, uh, house itself can't be turned parallel to the lines?
I had thought we got it back quite a ways, we'd only gain a little bit more, and then it just looks at all the vegetation in this area here, and it doesn't look into the lake as well. It's kind of, would be trapped to the dead end cove side. And it really didn't seem to be that much more to gain back in there, cause we're already at eighty.
So again, like the other one, an increase of thirty percent?
The building envelope. Right there, so there's the hundred foot line right there. So actually, it's negative. It wouldn't be, it's probably less square footage in the hundred foot zone than this existing camp already is.
Gotcha.
And the concrete being removed, this is all concrete right here, and he's removing about seven hundred square feet of it.
And what was that, this parking, concrete parking?
Boat ramps, all types of.
But we're not getting back the boat ramp, right?
Oh, so it's like a driveway that goes down in there?
Yeah. We talked about removing it, but it didn't, it was more of a concern for the erosion if we removed it.
Still got the eight twenty up there?
I'm interacting with three whole oranges, you'll find out in about thirty seconds.
Sorry.
It's difficult of a photo from the show.
Yeah. Isn't that saying that I'm not sure?
Is this just a fire?
No, it's just.
Just collapsed?
Yeah.
So we don't really have anything that's current, other than the stuff that you're looking at through the window. And going back and pushing, I guess I did before about the thirty percent increase, so the thirty percent would be in the front, you could increase the front thirty percent, and then the back, you could increase as much as you want, behind the hundred foot mark.
So the amount of square footage between the hundred foot and the lake is probably less than the camp that's being removed, so he's actually losing this thirty percent.
But that's because of his design?
Correct, well, that, we're pushing it back out of it. It's hard to see the boat ramp and the.
I guess I'm just having a little concern about that concrete in the front of the house.
Yeah, that was my first discussion with him, and he's had Acton Wakefield Watershed out, to do some mitigation, discuss.
And is it, do we move it up that much, seventy, did you say?
Uh, about seven hundred square feet. Giving us a picture of the tree on the lawn.
Kind of a broken up surface. I'm guessing it's showing this picture by.
A little pine needles on it, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah, it's hard to tell.
Is it the same one you?
I think so.
So he's got a vegetated buffer going in on the waterfront side by the stairs.
So you think this is it?
Yeah, that thing then probably leads to this.
So the area he's proposed to vegetate is next to the stairs here. Uh, and along the side of the stairs here.
And that just drops right off, obviously, from the stairs.
Yeah, vegetate that all up, and then he's proposing all of this here back into where the camp was, vegetated with a set of infiltration steps going back up. Cause we looked at, if you remove everything, you've gotta haul a ton of fill back in to fill everything back up, so leaving it down at the grade it was seemed the most, best avenue.
Does the frame water just come right down that driveway?
It didn't seem that bad, and we had talked about establishing a vegetated buffer right at the end of this path down here, crushstone drip line trench or something like that. So he's working with Acton Wakefield Watershed in to mitigate as much as it, that he can.
So he, he does not at present have a boat ramp?
Uh, I almost think you could if you had to, depends what you had for a boat, small personal water crafts or something like that, maybe.
What is the, the incline coming in at the top of the drive there?
Uh, these are one foot contours maybe? Coming down through here. One foot contours coming down through.
And how does this correspond to the quotes?
Uh, there's a list of issues he wanted to address that worked off of the numbers and the letters, I think were trees.
So he's gonna leave those stone retaining walls?
Uh, getting rid of the block ones here, but leaving these stone ones there.
And then what's gonna happen in that area?
Uh, this area here would just be filled, brought back in to get it back up to grade, so you'll have some steps that come up through here, some infiltration steps brings you back up to grades, and then back into the house.
Why is this like a walkway to the house?
Yeah, yeah. So leaving these retaining walls here, these stone retaining walls here.
What's happening in numero five, it's the dog leg that is stepping to the right on the gradient right there?
This area here?
Yeah.
Nothing's proposed there.
What's the topography of that? Does it slope down to the wall?
I don't know why the contours don't go all the way down in there.
They do on this one.
Does it show better on the map?
Yeah, they get a little closer together there.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some slope there, which is right.
Yeah.
The top's about five eighty-one, the bottom's five seventy-four. It drops seven.
Seven feet.
Seven feet and.
Thirty, forty, the house is, the original's fifty feet back, so.
Whatever, he's gonna have to address it, because of the scope of the project.
Well, if he's not touching anything down here, then I don't know. Uh, he's vegetating this area over here and this area over here, and he had a stone trench drain basically going across the end of this. Stormwater wise, we get rid of this here, and then the new camp would be addressed with drip line trenching all the way around, and some rain gardens, they'd pick up coming down through, or gutters and downspouts into catch bases of some kind.
As you get closer down to the water, are there any other measures interior to the stone wall or total?
There really wasn't very much erosion out there, that the trench drain at the bottom of the ramp area wouldn't take care of. Um, it's just, it's loaded with pine needles, there's some of the few people that don't come camp and break everything up.
So are we, are we comfortable with this, do you, you guys, do we need to take a look at this?
Which seems like the biggest question is that driveway, like dog leg on the, on the radiant side that.
This area here.
That maybe could be revegetated with some of the trees that are indicated to come down.
Yeah, so normally this area here would be revegetated, and the state allows grasses as a vegetation. And then the points removed from the trees, uh, within the hundred feet are supposed to be planted in the general area, we look to put them between development and the water, get the vegetation down in through this area or anywhere else else. There are a lot of overgrown pines in there that are dead standing that need to come out anyways, I don't think we'd be looking at much replanting behind him, especially with the C and P holes back there. Power lines cutting right through there.
So we need some more room to replant anyway, don't we?
He's gonna have a huge area right there.
That's where you're gonna ask him to put the plantings?
Um, I'm focused on this area down in here.
Yeah, right, that's what we're saying.
Yeah. Close during my site walk, that was the first attraction right there, cause this was just all concrete, and it's all concrete around him and all concrete all through here, and that all gets removed too. So I think he's a little low on the six hundred square feet number, but he's pretty good on the calculations he's done, so.
How is he doing on the percentage of impervious cover for his lot? Twenty percent, he must have quickly twenty percent.
Yeah.
Did you get a number for that?
Nineteen point four two.
Is what he's at right now.
He's, right now, he's at nineteen point oh two three after construction point four, so.
So he's not really shooting?
No. Well, if he's under twenty percent, then he's, he's within the guidelines. Uh, the difference is currently seven hun, seven thousand one hundred ninety-four square feet, non-vegetated, finished seven thousand three hundred forty-four, so. Uh, he's less than two hundred square feet more vegetated, and it is a fairly good sized lot.
But he's thinking out that concrete of what, seven hundred feet you said, and that's, that's only gonna add?
Uh, that's in the calculations, I'm sure. To get him under the twenty percent. Exactly.
What did you say, you said it's seven thousand square feet impervious right now?
Seven thousand one hundred and something.
Yeah, and he's only taking seven hundred away. And then he's coming back with seven three hundred. I'm, I'm being inclined to ask him to increase the seven hundred number, but personally.
What about the idea that you're disturbing more? You're setting up more vulnerability and erosion?
We can offset that.
Can you highlight for me exactly where the. Concrete is, whether it's good shaped concrete, or, you know, wrecked, you know.
It's hard to tell it's concrete just cause the amount of pine needles on top of it. But this whole area that's outlined is concrete.
So all the way down from the C and P?
All the way in through, and then he's gone around here, this area here was back here, so. And he's proposed pulling this out, that out, removing the camp, revegetating, and then this area here, and this area here, revegetating.
And that's still concrete right now, those two bottom ones down there?
Yeah, they're all that.
Yeah. So that's where mostly.
We got the right plane, is the.
Yeah, this one's removed.
And this one around.
I think I would be inclined to see if we can do more of that concrete, you know, too.
Cause you can ask for anything, but the plan that he has meets the guidelines as far as he's less than twenty percent lot coverage.
But he's not really reducing his impervious on the lot coverage after he does his improvement, he has.
And I would be likely to see a reduction here of some sort. I would agree if we were at thirty or forty percent lot coverage, but he's below the twenty percent lot coverage, so he meets the minimum. It's, it's like saying you're ten feet from the side light setback, but we'd like to see you thirteen or fourteen feet, you know, he meets the ten foot setback, so he, he meets the minimum standards, and of course, we can ask for anything. And it is unique, just cause there's so much concrete, and that was the first thing that attracted me when I made my initial site walk out there, is, is a lot of concrete out here.
Well, that's everything. You think they'd be first to putting plantings through the concrete, if they, you know, made holes in it, put their plantings right in? You know, the trees don't mind that.
No, my initial thought was to cut it right there and pull that right back out and revegetate, but of course, nobody's gonna wanna do up that boat ramp if they don't have to. So the other thought was, as, as he went to this side here to mitigate all this area here, so they're gonna go and go down through and then catch it at the end of the ramp and just get the stormwater in the ground.
But it's, how many feet is it away from the terminus of that little boat ramp, he calls? How far away in feet are you from the, from the edge of the lake?
Five feet maybe? Most depends on if it dides in or out.
And there's gonna be, you said, a rain garden or some kind there, and that's gonna get destroyed by the way we're starting to impose it now?
Um, more of a crushed stone, not so much a water bath there, but just something to catch it as it comes off the concrete. Uh, and at least it's not asphalt, so you're not getting the oils and stuff out of it, and it has been down, my guess would be, for over fifty years. So I would think any bleaching off the top has, and they love the pine needles on it when I was there last. Uh, it's been a family camp for a long time, so he's just got it, and so I can't say he's not gonna start blowing the pine needles off, but.
They're slipping out of the door.
Exactly.
What were those, was it like earth blocks or something, what were those blocks that like?
The holes in the vegetation. The DEP did give you a allowance for those for impervious, but they rescinded it within a couple of years because the grass isn't running up through it. Or the ramp up is not allowing the grass to. allowing the grass to... It's just, you know, when you're putting them in your driveway, you're driving over them, you're plowing over them, they're...
They're covered in sand.
Exactly, yeah. The intent is there, maybe you choose right sometimes, but they rescinded it pretty quickly and took away the credit that was given for impervious.
Now, that area of wreck wrap right there, that looks like a pretty big area here right there, and that water, you said, what's the water directed into that thing?
I think it's just this cliff that wraps around there, and when I usually see all this lot...
If you look at that then, it's just like, what kind of rip wrap are you talking about? You know, like soft holes or?
Exactly. Round rock, not crush, it's not true rip wrap.
They brought it down.
When I look at this type of construction with these walls and concrete everywhere as I just picture, they got home from the war back in the 50s or so, and this is what they did, with the materials they had on site, and, you know.
Well, are we comfortable moving forward? Do you wanna do? I guess it kind of feels that they want the device to enable the water to be infiltrated at the terminus of that, what we're calling the boat ramp, is truly gonna be affected. I'd like to see that thing gone myself.
Yeah, me too. That was the attraction. Soon as you go there, that's exactly where you go to, so. And they probably could even cut in some water baths, the rubber raises, and make some slices in this and get a diversion, so it's not coming down into the infiltration trench at the bottom of that, but...
And I mean, they could take, again, I don't know, we have control over that, but you could take the concrete out and not necessarily lose the ability to put a boat in the water, but then have not quite as solid a, you know, material that's really funneling the water down, get it more of a chance to be directed differently.
And I think, I think that's just the key word, is if you direct it off of this ramp and put it into some rain gardens in the side, and it's not that long and wide that you've got a ton of stormwater coming off, but currently how the camp is now, it's dripping on these two sides, it's concrete everywhere is on this two side, so all this stormwater is mitigating down and heading this way. So the new camp is, the stormwater's going into the ground right off the camp, this is all revegetated here, so none of this stormwater is even, you're not gonna have any stormwater from the houses coming past this area here. You're still gonna have some coming down the driveway, but he did talk with Acton Wakefield Watershed about a couple of water baths to stop it. So if you've eliminated all the water coming down from H Road down to this area, now all you have to do is mitigate this little bit of area, and that makes it a lot easier. Eliminate the volume and the percentage, and then just treat what you've got. So this kind of all slopes this way, that's why he's vegetating this area here and get it to absorb into here. Now really, all you're dealing with is a couple hundred square feet, and that's fairly a lot easier to deal with.
And do you think that crushed stone at the end there would be able to handle that to 100 square foot or above?
Yeah, of course, it's probably in the water table when it goes down in, you know, it's gonna hit that and come down through. Ideally would be the raises on this or something that can bring it over to the side, but I don't know, you're probably not gonna have that much volume.
Are we able to throw that in this condition to put that kind of thing in there?
Acton Wakefield Watershed, that was one of their concerns also, so between the detention that went across the bottom of this and crushed stone, I think that's gonna mitigate most of it, again, because we've reduced all the volume coming down into that area.
Is there a photo that shows that to any advantage?
I don't have a good one from, because it, it looks like forest.
Oh, because of all this stuff?
Sure, it's a slope a little bit. Yeah, because they'll come with pine needles. Put our minds, you know?
Yeah. If it could be addressed, I guess in the stormwater mitigation.
Okay, what do we got right there?
Yeah, so this is the area they're talking about, the revegetation there and there, so that ramp is gonna left, but there's the ramp.
And we go back to the actual positioning, repositioning of the home, where you gain, what do we say, 18, what do we say, 18 feet? It was less than what we were talking.
It was 20, it was back from 50 to 72, about, right? So we gained 22 feet about, approximately.
Which is certainly a plus.
Yeah, that part looks a bit, yeah, which is part of that.
It's the existing conditions that he's really not touching that attracts us and want him to touch.
Right. What actually can he launch from that foolish thing?
Not very much. You're not gonna launch big boats or pontoon boats or anything, you're probably down to personal water crafts, and really, it's probably the walking path to get down to a beach.
Do you, do you recall, like, what's the difference in elevation at the terminus of that?
From there to the top of that?
To the edge of the water.
I bet you eight feet from the water's edge to the top of that, where that dogwood stands.
Or when it stops. I was wondering, moving toward the water, toward the edge, from that edge to the lake, what's the elevation?
Oh, from there to the lake?
Yeah.
It's gradual, going down a couple of feet.
Is that beach around the left side at the bottom of the steps?
Yeah, I can't remember. I would say so, otherwise, somebody would put a stone wall there like they did all the way across here and up there, that would be a retaining wall if it was needed. So I think it's fairly flat there.
And then they have a pump house right there. This is a pump house?
This one?
Yeah. Do they have like an access road or some sort of that thing?
No.
You can't, not like they, I mean, is it a drill well or?
I think it's water well.
Oh, okay.
Sort of a point?
I think it's sucked out to the lake.
What is it sucked to, Sam?
I guess I would prefer we could consider removing the concrete that comprises the boat ramp area, as we're calling it, and revegetating that whole area, I think would make this thing more sensible to me, and it's a little hard to visualize it, but I'm looking at a contour drop from 581 at the top of it down to 576, so it's a, what, a six foot, five foot drop over that thing, and I'll see what the scale of this drawing is.
One inch is 20, so it's five feet, 20 feet?
Yeah. I mean, if you can't, we're not busting these chops, if you can't launch anything other than a canoe or a kayak there, it's gonna be a better way to address that little tongue of concrete, removing it and maybe revegetating it, that'd be my preference. It's just, in other words, it's gonna, if we don't do it now, it's gonna be a maintenance problem for Mr. Martin and the folks who follow Mr. Martin's ownership. But I defer to Ken's psychism, awareness of how feasible it is to address that. Are you comfortable with going back and talking to him about that?
To do something with the...
Incl- focus, to not inhibit his ability to do whatever he plans to do with it at present, you know, leaving it there, if we're not infringing on his ability to launch your water crafts, as you're calling it, then let's try to address the problem of stormwater management, maybe in a more effective way, as long as we're not retaining his use significantly.
In his defense, my number's blocked, so he may not be picking up a block number. If it was a 207, he probably would.
Are they turning calm right now?
Yeah.
Well, I love that idea, I think if we increase, maybe if we increase that 700 square feet number and, you know, with the increase being focused on that pine needle, you know, maybe increase it to 1,000 square feet removed or?
Good evening, Mr. Martin.
Yep.
Kenny Ball up in Acton, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, you're live with the planning board up here, we're discussing your project.
Okay.
Hey, your boat ramp out there, do you actually launch boats out of that?
Um, I, to be honest, I hadn't used it yet, but I had an issue with a leak this year, and I didn't use it much this year, but not very often, so.
Yeah, we've got almost all the project approved, but as we discussed on site, that boat ramp is just, the planning board's stumbling over that. We've talked about the vegetated areas by the stairs, the vegetated areas up by the camp. Would you, would you be opposed of a buffer strip of some kind and removing some more of the concrete in the boat ramp area?
Um, would I have to take the whole thing out, but I just, like, I think I saw on the website, like, whether our boat needs to let the river water, a small buffer or something like that.
Yeah, that's what we had talked about, is as you were working with Acton Wakefield Watershed and getting a couple of rubber raises, bringing them over to rain gardens. How much are you guys thinking to remove? Getting a good 10 foot buffer in there from the water's edge?
How long is that whole talk, Sam?
Yeah, what'd you say, 200 square feet?
Yeah, it's probably, how far from the crest of the hill down to the water? 20, 25 feet or?
Um, well, you know, that far it's really, really steep, maybe, maybe 20, yeah, 15, 20, if I had to put a guess.
You guys be good with a 10 foot buffer?
Stumbling where he's got that, right?
Yeah. Would you be comfortable with a 10 foot buffer down there, or basically removing 10 feet of the concrete coming off of the water's edge and some erosion control mulch and a little bit of vegetation?
Yeah, I think that's enough to be compromised, and so how do you manage to do with that?
Definitely?
Yeah.
Awesome, I'll probably get you a call next week and let you know where we're at, but it looks positive right now.
Okay, perfect, thank you guys.
Have a good day.
All right, bye.
All right, that being said, any other comments? I will, we accept the application of Martin to, what do you call it, respect the location permit. Second? Do we have a?
Nope.
Comments about the motion itself?
Yeah, I just wanna get the impervious straight on the...
As is there a plan with the removal of this and adding a 10 foot vegetated buffer at the bottom of the boat ramp?
Are we, is it 10 feet from the water or 10 feet from the bottom of the existing section?
I think it's pretty close in there, it's a little vague.
Well, are we removing 10 feet from the water or 10 feet of concrete?
10 feet of concrete is not...
I think that's what you have to lose, 10 feet of concrete.
Yeah, so I think the high water comes up to there, and we just, we wanna make sure it at least stays out of the high water.
And then we give some room to put some material there to, to, to take care of some of that, without it having already in water.
Yeah, great.
All right, any other comments?
Um, it can be, so we'll leave that 700 number alone, and you'll just change it up and subtract this from the 700 and leave some up above, is that the thought, or should we increase the 700 number to include this?
Correct.
That's how I saw it, it'll bring up to about 819, yeah, 800 square feet, so 700 of...
As per plan and including 10 feet vegetated buffer at the bottom of the boat ramp.
All right, you good, Ken?
Yeah, I just wanna...
Yeah, no, I agree, glad you did.
Pretty good.
Anybody else? Find it all in favor? All right, great, thank you. Yeah. Next.
Yes.
Next, well, that's...
I think that's just boilerplate.
Boiler.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to just throw that out to you. What's it called? Here for me, Yoli, I know I didn't type with my name on there, but it came in, but I, Ken and I have met with Ed, as you can see from what it says there, basically with his concern and I guess the selectmen concern about areas of Acton that they've gotten some complaints about. And he wanted to know, you know, what our ordinance said, he wanted to know what the state said, he wanted to know, you know, what we thought. And by the time we got all done, we were basically realizing that we needed to see the, what it was referred to as the property management book, and I don't think that has shown up yet. I think if it had, you would have seen it.
She owned, she ordered it, yes, I think she said she got it from EDF Electronics, so.
Yeah.
Same people that make the building code have a property maintenance code. It's adopted in Saco, Concord, York, Kittery, those areas.
And a good name, I think that's a compliment.
A good name is mostly for development. A lot of the concerns are junk yachts that I just don't have the time to deal with because I'm in the shoreline zone so much, so some of the additional talk was to leave the shoreline zone alone for a while and go deal with junk yachts, but that doesn't make sense, so, to me, but I told him, you tell me what to ignore and what to go do, and we'll do with that. We've got probably last year alone about 250 trees we're still chasing that were removed that need replanting, and closing up on a lot of other issues. We've just got more on the shoreline zone than we can deal with.
And I think the last paragraph kinda gives you the sense of what Ed's thought is too, he's not out there, you know, banging the table to do something like we have seen in the past, it's more, you know, kinda let us see what we wanna do and go that route. He had some idea that maybe this could be done at a future special meeting, but, you know, we had some discussion about that too, you know, whether that's a good thing, not such a good thing, you know, whether you, but obviously, we're a long way from that, you know, and one of the other things that we were talking about is the fact that we think that there are other things in the ordinance that need to be adjusted by us over the next block of time, year or so, continue to fix what we have been working on over the last year, and maybe this is something during that time period we could look at too. But for the time being, we're at hold, at least until we get a look at this property management material, and Ed will be looking at that also, I'm sure.
You have a question?
Sure.
What were the complaints that were submitted?
I honestly don't know, I'm not, wasn't privy to the complaints.
Most of them were junk yachts, and one specific individual probably had almost 20 vehicles, got them down to two or three, another year later, 15, 16 are there, then they register them, got them down to a couple, so that's some of the concerns. You get into the property maintenance code, that's what we'd have to take a look at, strike out a lot of stuff we don't want. The grass is too tall, the paint's peeling on your house and stuff. The grass is too tall, the paint's peeling on your house and stuff like that. And I've never seen that or never thought of that being adopted in rural Acton. Uh, some of the other complaints were a bunch of farm equipment in people's yads, chicken complaints, things like that, so... My thought was there's enough rules and regulations in the junkyard ordinance to take care of the junk yads. It's just there isn't enough time in the day to take care of them.
So we're looking at adopting some language?
Not even...
Possibly from that document?
That's probably a better word. I mean, looking at it and just kinda seeing where we're at, kind of dealing.
I was looking in the definition, I was trying to figure out what, where we are right now. This is an automobile graveyard. It's just a yard, field or other area used as a place for storage of three or more unserviceable discarded worn-out junk motor vehicles. I mean, that, how do we even define?
A junk yacht?
That's an automobile graveyard.
Yeah, yeah. So if you can't drive it up the street now, then it is one for three vehicles.
But, but you can drive it around, it's unregistered, it's not...
It would, to drive it up the street, it would need to be registered, insured and...
So that's what you're saying?
Inspection sticker.
So it's your, your spare truck you're using in the woodlot is considered a...
That would be one.
That would be considered one? Okay, and that was that?
And ideally ignored the plot track.
This is the real question though. Is it, is that per property or per individual living?
Per property.
Per property?
Yeah.
So you have a family, two, you know, two families living there and you got six people, you can only have three junk cars? Three, only two, with six feet, six feet?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
But the agricultural vehicles, we erase the sign of the town or the name on it, that doesn't count.
Right, you get it registered as a farm vehicle.
And when the price of steel was high, we didn't have a junk yacht issue probably because the crushers were taking it just as quick, everyone was making a ton of money. Price of steel's falling, it's collecting it. And in my opinion, because I'm not very mechanically inclined, I can't even change the oil on my vehicles anymore. So the days of having three or four Ford Escorts to keep the one on the road, those are over. You're not maintaining, taking parts off and working. You've gotta run VIN numbers on a car to make sure you have the right parts nowadays, so... Those are kinda gone, but there's places that have, you know, three or four hundred pallets around the place. So we had a house last year.
But what would that, that would be considered under junkyard? That would be considered discarded scrap or junk lumber? But what if they say it's a fire?
Oh, it's the fencing?
Yeah, I mean, it had, yeah, that's difficult, you know.
That is. So with the pallet farm, you know, I took some pictures of it, sent it to the town attorney and said, "Do you think it's a junk yacht?" He says, "Absolutely." Of course, maybe he's looking at a week's worth of work too. The last individual we had...
Yeah, that's a tricky one, I don't see how that is necessarily. I mean, you say you had firewood dumped...
Well, if they just have a couple, three hundred pallets, there's probably a lot of other stuff on the property too. Yeah. And most of the complaints we get in Milton Mills Road. You go from the beginning to the end and there's seven, eight of them.
So basically, but we're not worried about junk yards you can't see from the road?
If you do select area enforcement, you pick on Mr. Smith because you can see him.
That's what I'm saying, you're picking on people you can see from the road, but the people in the back you can't see on the road.
Yeah. I happened to do a flyover town a couple of weeks ago and there's a lot of stuff in the backyards, which we ignore every day, but is it the junk yacht that I'm offended for because it looks like crap? Or is it the things leaking out of these vehicles getting into the neighbor's well that should really be the real issue?
Yeah.
So...
Part of the pressure treated water?
Oh, the antifreeze or the gasoline, the oils coming out of this stuff into the ground, so I don't know. I think we've got enough regulations because we're not even enforcing the regulations we have. Enforce what you have and then if we need more help, talking to the towns that have adopted this, it's a great tool, we have a problem child, but it's not, we don't go out looking for this stuff. But if you have enough people complaining about the neighbor because they don't like them, you know, that's all another thing.
And that aspect of it, aren't you also opening up your, your self-advantage if they decide that, hey, my, my yard's like this, but I know that Joe Schwo here is, the yard is worse than mine, so why are you picking on me?
Exactly. And you can't have selective enforcement, you'd have to continuously start with one place and be going down...
Correct. And do we have resources to do that?
Not at this time. So the individual we had last year with a dilapidated structure and a junk yacht, when we took him to court, the day of court, he spun it around that he didn't have a junk yacht, he has a junkie yacht. And, and I thought the judge was gonna buy it when we went in to talk, us and the judge beforehand to see where we were. And the other side's attorney came up with that. I'm like, oh my God, I'm not prepared for a junkie yacht, I think...
What's a junkie yacht?
That's just, yeah, it was a junk in it. Doesn't meet the definition junkie yacht. So he circumvented pretty good. I thought he had me and the judge just looked at his lawyer and said, "I think the town's made a reasonable order offer, I think your client should take care of that." So by the time we were done, the house has now been totally removed. We got that condemned and removed. He didn't do it within the timeframe required, so there was another five thousand dollar penalty he had to pay on it and the whole yacht is now all cleaned up. But that's the last thing we want, or I wanna deal with is somebody didn't do it within the time, we don't wanna go to court for one, you just want compliance. And, you know, it just escalated from that point there. The people across the street from it love it now because it's all cleaned up. But that took a hundred and fifty hours, maybe two hundred, not compared to my shoreline violations where they stripped the whole lot. That was probably a couple, three hundred hours on that one too. And then we had the whole house built out in the resource protection behind the school. That's probably another hundred hours on that one. We're still working with that. So there's five hundred hours just on three issues. Some people you can say, hey, clean your crap up, you drive by the next day and it's cleaned up. Others, you know, it's the individual that had to rip his house down, that was, he enjoys me versus the government. His lawyer was the lawyer that he always hires when he has to fight the government, is what he told us today at court. You know, we just chatting upfront, nice enough guy, no issues, you know, this was a hobby almost.
But it eats up your time.
Eats up my time. So, you know, I told them if you're moving forward with this, they're thinking of another individual.
Work in progress.
Work in progress. So we do have a document. I don't know if we can click print on this or they don't allow us, but we'll try to get you guys all the copy and see which way the selectmen want to go with that.
So is there real thought about hiring or adding, or hiring another?
Second person? You looking for a job?
Like, no, it's okay.
We had a second person before and usually he's gonna need at least to be certified in ten different areas, so that's ten exams he's gonna need to take. The other individual was offered a job in Kennybunk after, was he a year here? Maybe a year and a half? Uh, and the town clerk has the same problem too. You get him in, you get him trained and now another town will steal them as soon as they get it because they don't care, they don't care if he's only been working a day. Now I have somebody that's trained, so... I mean, originally they would, I'd go to ten hours, twenty hours, um, you don't know. Is there somebody retiring that would love this? But if you hire the wrong individual, it's just gonna be more headaches than it's worth.
Spend more time with that.
Yeah, exactly. With complaints, yeah. How about the complainer?
All right, anything else? Anybody else, comments, questions about? Good? Motion to adjourn?
Next week?
Second?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?